Commissioner, here. Commissioner Anderson, Eric. Commissioner Barrett.
Yeah.
Commissioner Griffiths, Eric. Commissioner Schneider.
Here.
Commissioners Bolton and Wolf are absent tonight. I'd make a note the number approved in minutes is written for June nineteenth twenty twenty five.
Okay.
This has been moved into second to approve minutes in the June nineteenth meeting. Um, all of the regular direction. All of the votes, which carries on. Revisions, yes. That's, 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 that's. Uh, this would be, uh, a potential amendment to Article twenty one supplementary use regulation, continual uses, et cetera, uses. Prohibited uses to include surveys for hydrogen extraction related to energy production. Uh, at the June planning commission meeting, staff provided commissioners with a list of alternative energy sources and a tentative timeline to address these topics over the next several months. As mentioned in June, hydrogen will be the initial consideration of importance since there is ongoing hydrogen surveying being conducted in Dickinson County and throughout the state. Furthermore, the county commission has also indicated their interest in the planning commission's consideration of this topic due to the current status of the hydrogen survey taking place. Uh, staff have provided the commission a number of items pertaining to the federal hydrogen policy and production methods. Um, because hydrogen as an energy source is still infancy. Information on existing facilities and jurisdictions allowing such facilities is scarce. And I understand that I don't want you to get overwhelmed with stuff that I give you. It's in the interest of transparency that I sent a lot of that stuff to you to show you that this is what I'm researching, this is what I'm looking at. We don't have to go through all of it. That's, that's my job anyway. But it's a, well, I'm just letting you know so that if I refer to something in the future, it might be one of those documents I sent you. So just kind of letting you know. But, uh, there, there are several class types of hydrogen use. Uh, the two primary uses are termed green and gray hydrogen. Uh, green hydrogen is used exclusively as a standalone energy source fueling the existing electrical grid powering homes, factories, et cetera. Gray hydrogen is used at some point in the process of production of refined oil or some other non-renewable energy source such as coal currently tied to the grid. Uh, there are currently two great hydrogen facilities in the state of Kansas involved primarily in the production of oil. Those are located, I think, in Pittsburgh and Alvarado. Uh, Alvarado, excuse me. Uh, a question was raised by the commission last month whether you can just like recommend the prohibition uh, on certain alternative energies in, in the regulations. And the answer is yes, but there's a, a, a pretty significant caveat. Uh, based on the information provided during a presentation in Form twenty three by High Plains Resources. That's the firm in the ongoing hydrogen survey. The infrastructure involved in hydrogen production resembles that of natural gas or oil distribution or collection. Uh, and I'll just using the Trans-Canada Pipeline as, as one example, but I've got another example as well. Uh, but so now the commission must consider the economic and land use impacts on Dickinson County. Uh, it must also consider any kind of legal precedent set by previous recommendations of a full blow made by the commission for similar uses with similar infrastructure. Uh, should the commission recommend a ban or a policy prohibiting any specific alternative energy source in the county? We must also acknowledge the potential impact downline of adjacent communities, jurisdictions which may be relying on that commodity. Uh, the commission must understand that the economic and legal ramifications to Dickinson County with such a policy is pursued. Uh, it is better for the, the commission to consider, and this applies to both the, uh, the planning commission and county commission. The county as a whole is better for the commission to consider a policy structured around either restriction or regulation. Uh, since prohibition of abuse might violate the spirit and intent of comprehensive plan. Uh, based on that, I was gonna say, based on the research that I have done so far, um, this looks very similar to oil extraction. Uh, the only difference is, uh, the way that my understanding is, the way it was described, the media's trucks will go onto a site on private property and, uh, that has this, this particular well. And they will extract the hydrogen. They will take the hydrogen off-site and take it to another plant for distribution. Uh, the, uh, this, uh, so with that in mind, the, uh, it's, it would be a, and my recommendation would be this would be a conditional use permit. And we would probably because of the not knowing how much truck traffic there is, you have to keep in mind there's truck traffic, heavy truck traffic. And so, yeah, one of the conditions that you would place on something like this would be uh, making sure that they're, uh, they're able to be able to handle that. Get an idea of what they're doing, what the proposal is for that particular use. And as far as traffic in, on and off that site. Um, the other issue that comes up is uh, environmental or safety issues. My, based on what I have researched so far, the EPA, uh, with say KDHE, but I haven't dealt too much into KDHE's requirements yet. But right now the feds are addressing this issue of hydrogen. Uh, and as far as one of the things we could put in there with these safety considerations based upon federal, uh, safety standards and state safety standards. What we could do is you could probably make a requirement if someone, an applicant, brings a request in for one of these, uh, facilities that they, one of the things that would be required for their application packet to me or to, to, for you guys for the planning commission would be proof that they have uh, contacted or they're in the process of being approved for, you know, federal permits and that sort of thing for safety and making sure that they have their safety requirements there. So, uh, that's in a nutshell, uh, what I've been able to gather so far. Uh, what I would probably, uh, ask of you all is if you want me to, if you wanted directly to go ahead and look to see if there's any counties, uh, any, or any place around the country that's addressing this uh, issue, uh, as, as far as zoning type issue. Uh, I can do that and find out if there is something that we can use as a sample. Because as I said, the information is very sparse. But I would imagine that there are a lot of the counties, counties especially, are probably uh, jumping on to this or have, have, had a start on it. So if you want to, I can, uh, uh, the option you would have is just to directly go ahead and research and see what other counties are doing or what other jurisdictions may be doing. Because right now, the, the information is pretty sparse. But what you've done is kind of what I've, what I've been able to gather so far. The other issue, uh, the other thing I wanted to point out is to compare it to something that we have already, our regulations. You could, you could treat it like an electrical substation. Uh, electrical substations are conditional use. And they have like, you know, they, they wouldn't have as much traffic going in and out. But it would still be, it would still have to be certain requirements for setbacks and things like that from property lines. Uh, but I said, that's the other thing to consider is that this would be like a substation, if you will, for, um, hydrogen, hydrogen extraction. Would be producing hydrogen and just be extracting.
Do we have, can I watch for like the oil wells, natural gas production?
Most of the oil wells are natural gas. Correct me if I'm wrong, but a lot of those are, have been in existence for a while. And so.
We don't have much oil in these states.
Yeah.
My question is if somebody came in more on saying, you found a question where oil riddled natural system.
Yeah, it would be, it would be probably a, uh, if it's on private property and it's, it now it's, if it's boiled and it is going to be extracted, but my point, I'm thinking of like a pipeline. That would be a conditional use permit, but if it's, if, if it's leased area, probably a conditional use, but with a caveat, which is that, uh, they would have to make sure that, uh, they would have to let us know how many truck, how much truck traffic's going to be going in and out there for collecting the oil. If that's how they do it. It depends on how that process is done, whether or not I should say just to see if it's a conditional use. There, there's a lot of traffic going in and out of, of that property. They have a property need one for a brand new well. Uh, but if there's not much truck traffic, then, you know, if they're just saying, okay, this is just gonna be my personal well that I'm gonna use on site for myself, then that's, that's permitted. But if it's one of those where there's gonna be.
A time driver in the question.
Yeah.
To take that question further, and maybe you were going for this Kelly, maybe you weren't. Do we have written regulations for oil extraction or natural gas extraction?
No, not at the moment.
That would fall under, under categories at the very end of your, there's literally conditional uses categories that seem necessary. Okay, so when, in comparing the potential of hydrogen to other regulations we have for extraction, we do not have oil or gas regulations for extraction, not specifically.
Okay. And so the only reason that I would probably say that this would be a major conditional, not major conditional use, a conditional use in general is because of the, the potential for truck traffic going in and out to the collection.
I'm sorry, I missed the meaning. Last time when we talked about the surgery, so I couldn't get it done. But I did watch the, the eight, the online a couple times. And, uh, had a, had a question or two in that you mentioned like you do here that is probably problematic if we prohibit something. Um, might be better if we put conditions on. And one of the things that I thought I understood you were saying in there was we could s- say something like, you know, we, we won't accept any applications until we, until the county commission has completed our research or completed the regulations.
That's right.
And so would it be possible rather than doing that? And I was thinking back, you, you mentioned also that in, in year moratorium law, solar, whatever else is gonna end. That's just, yeah, yeah. Could we do just one blanket, uh, regulation that, that simply states for all energy, we'll, we'll not accept any applications until the county has completed its research into that particular topic. So whether it's solar, wind, I guess where I got one, one thing kind of stuck in the radar. Whether it's batteries or you're talking about, uh, bitcoin storage or something and then, um, and then, you know, the hydrogen. Maybe even could be your oil or your gas islands that we could protect the county uh, so that we don't get, uh, prematurely drug into something and to, to, uh, your point, I did, I knew Martin, 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 to Martin's point, he was saying, he was kind of nervous about having any regulations because then if we have anything, somebody hurds up and does applications to say, hey, we made regulations. And we're like, no, 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 we're not quite done. Well, these were your regulations. Uh, we applied based on that and now, now the attorney's getting involved and they say, hey, you gotta play ball. So if we just had one, and this may not be feasible, but if we just had one kind of blanket statement that protected us in all of those areas that said, in Dixie County will not entertain applications for alternative energy, any energy, um, until the county has completed its, its research regulations and, and, uh, restrictions. Then would that protect us and give us the ability? It's like Martin was saying during the wind thing, there were some questions about, could we, uh, slow the process down and maybe tighten up our rules a little bit? Once we understood it, that once we kind of got in that process.
Yeah.
Would something like that be possible?
You can't. I mean, and this is one of those things that I've explained before is that even if like the moratorium ends in next August, they're would saying we haven't completed our research yet or haven't completed all the, the changes that we want to do yet uh, for the resolutions to, you know, whichever form of energy we're going for. Uh, we can still say, hey, look, we're, we're not finished yet. We're not, we haven't addressed that, that particular energy or we haven't addressed this particular energy. And, uh, we won't be accepting, uh, any applications until, you know, that gets changed because we aren't addressing it yet. It's gotta be addressed in the regulations. So they would not be able to submit an application anymore. And then that way we don't get into the, the, uh, a similar thing where someone says, well, they've already, uh, turned in an application. And once that's turned in, they're kind of tied, we would be ahead of that. We just said, as long as, as long as we're still researching, you know, I guess, and this was explained to me from, uh, you know, our, my, my predecessor, uh, that said, uh, the best way to handle that is just to say, hey, look, even if the moratorium expires, you can say, I'm still updating the zoning regulations. And we haven't addressed that particular issue yet.
So attorneys will, uh, take issue with the prohibition with moratorium. They'll, they'll have the opportunity to find fault with that. It would be much more difficult for them to find fault with us just continuing the research.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, to continue the research. Uh, the, the moratoriums are limited because you can only, uh, the two years is the maximum that I think legally that we can do a two-year moratorium. And, uh, that would be difficult to extend. That's why I was saying if you run into, if you run into a situation where we haven't completed, our, you guys and, and staff have not completed our, our research and, and putting together a resolution for it for the type of energy or making these, these amendments allowing this, uh, these alternative energies. We can just say, hey, look, we're still in the process of, of updating regulations. Now, to do that, we have to make sure that we're on a consistent schedule where we're, we have it on schedule for like, let's say, uh, a meeting and like once, let's say the moratorium ends. Uh, we have to have that as a continuous agenda item so we get that resolved. So then that way that will keep us from being, like, oh, okay, well, oh, you're, uh, you're, uh, you must have resolved it or you would not have skipped a month, month. So we have to.
I, I don't think that's accurate, that we have to have that as a topic every month to make it a continuous research thing. Some of these things like hydrogen as an example. You know, there's so much that's unknown. It's so new on the horizon that from the reading that I've done, that might take us an extended period of time. And again, if you get attorneys involved, they'll, they'll, you know, they'll go after anything. But I don't think that there would be an expectation that we would have to have that on the agenda every month. Or even if an applicant would say, um, gosh, you didn't have it on last August, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn in application September. You're just gonna have to eat it. I think that, that if we craft that language correctly, it would allow us to do what we need to do and not be back to the corner from any angle, including artificially restricted timelines.
Well, that would be something we would, uh, approach probably next year, closer to the time limit, uh, the expiration date. And so I could research and see how we could do that wording, but that's not something we would necessarily want. Now, because the moratoriums. On, on that one, I guess that's true, but that, but that doesn't necessarily cover some hydrogen. I mean, so as a thing of, of, of question, it covers, it covers everything that is not already in our regulations. So all the alternative energy, hydrogen, solar, all alternative energy is, is what that moratorium covers with the exception.
Okay, so we've got a one-year get-out-of-jail-free card. And then after that, we, by then, we can truly craft the language that would give us flexibility to not have to accept an application until we as a planning board were really comfortable and the commission was comfortable with our research rules and regulations.
Right, right, makes sense, yeah. And, and it's, but it's the, the only thing you have to keep in mind is that there is surveying going on right now in the county for hydrogen. And, and they took that risk.
Right.
Decision on their own.
Yes.
With, I don't think any promotion from the county, no. So that's a business risk they, they accepted.
Right.
And I would not be comfortable being pushed because somebody's out there. And I just, I'm just reminding you that's, that it's, it's coming down the line. I'll put it that way. At some point it will, you know, whether it's hydrogen, solar, or any other, other type of new kind of energy that's coming out there, it's, there are, we, there are eyes on this region.
Okay, so I have two questions. Um, number one, so we, we're starting to talk about regulations. So we've always accepted that the extraction of hydrogen is a good use of our land.
Yes.
Well, how do we do, how do we do that?
Well, I'm saying that it's hydrogen extraction is no different than any other extraction of, uh, of a product out of the ground.
Okay.
So if we say oil, extracting oil is a good thing. Extracting coal is a good.
But I'm not saying that oil extracting is a good thing for gas or coal extracting is a good thing. I'm just saying, we've always skipped, is it a good use of our land? Or at least I, that hasn't been a topic which we've gone right into regulation.
Isn't it in the comments, a plan that will conserve alternate energy sources?
Energy sources are, are in there.
But isn't it also that will conserve farmland? Move that, I mean, safety of the community?
If, if, if you're conserving farmland, it's sort of like, it goes back with what, uh, I'll bring, bring it back to what Jim Calhoun said, uh, or he said it's, yeah, but that's true, but if you do that too often, then you get a, you end up, are you really preserving the county's, you know, danger or its, uh, its, its, uh, its way of life or whatever, uh, its land? Are you really conserving the land? Or is it preventing someone from doing what they want to try to pursue on their property? And that's where you, that's where it starts to get kind of, it's gray. Yes, we want to conserve, uh, farmland, but.
So are there any green extraction wells in United States, but?
From what I've seen, I'll have to double check and see because I've got a map. And I, uh, I just know like two, three of Kansas at this point. And they only, there's like two or three that are brown. That are, they're going to come for it. I'm sorry, Greg. Uh, and they are, I can say they're east, south of, of, so nothing out this way.
Do they have, is there any form of just simply registering to with the, you know, health department or something? If they're gonna, if they're gonna grill and check, I mean, is there any, uh, method of kind of tracking who, what, where, and when?
Well, that would be it. Again, it would be one of those things, I would liken it to, uh, what we do for, uh, even though it's a different use, uh, cell towers. Uh, cell towers are governed, uh, as far as safety regulations by the feds. And so what you would do is you would just say, hey, look, I need to do this, submit a, uh, documentation from either the EPA, uh, or, or some other, I think it would be, you have somebody saying apply for all the proper permits. I mean, your, your project is going to need safety and all the requirements of, you know, the feds and the state.
So again, is that on the front end, things I like, you just grow a well in the pasture. I didn't need your permission. I just told you to sit down here and I didn't want her. Assuming I didn't have to permit, you know, and, and he just came, brought it ready, drove it home. Maybe I just stepped in here. I don't know. But, you know, we, we grew it and I put a silver well in it and, yeah. So is, is it that benign on the, on the hydrogen and oil and gas? Or before they grill, do they have to go through different permitting processes?
Probably they will have to before they even approach us for anything. They would probably, it's like with any other thing that's regulated outside of our jurisdiction is that they would have to already, by the time they get to us, they're already, uh, interacting with the feds and state on whatever they need to do. So what we would do is we would require them to show us their documentation saying that, uh, you know, they're, they meet whatever requirements that the feds and state.
So for, so there's exploration going on right now?
Right.
Have we checked that? Have, have they, abide by the state and federal rules, the ones that are out there today?
Have you drilled? Drilled, you can, well, I'm, well, we're not. What they're doing is they are testing, they're doing scientific testing. And that means, you know, they're, they're doing it in the right of way mostly, and so that's already approved.
And it's like, are doing it in the right way and you didn't get permit for it, but it's on private land, so it's on private land.
So how many do we have that are, that are in the right way?
They only tested on Camp Road, you know, for the northern part of county. And I think they only did a few days of that, so, but from what we're hearing, they're signing leases.
So in the spirit of transparency?
They are signing leases.
In the spirit of transparency, can this board or county commissioners require that a more leasing in this county for whatever renewable energy activity, you report it and it's public information?
It's recorded. All leases are recorded.
It's registered deeds, but they don't have to record them right away. I don't believe that. Yeah, so, but as for a regulation like that, that's something you would want to get a little involved in.
The second part of my question, my second question would be, um, information is very sparse. I've said that a couple of times in the handouts that you've given. So where are we going to go then, other than plagiarizing some other county's guess at what we should be doing for regulations? What's, that's, I hate to say this, okay, you're, you're not gonna like the answer. That's standard operating procedure for all counties. All counties take from other counties. I mean, I'm just saying, so if there's a, if there's something that a county does not, uh, has not addressed and one county has, one county will say, hey, look, do you mind if we take your, steal your, uh, your language for this?
Yeah.
That's not, so, so have you looked into that or, or, I mean, I only said add regulations. On, that's one of the things I was gonna ask, did you guys?
On, that's one of the things I was gonna ask, did you guys, I think you go ahead and start looking.
Yeah, I think that's what you, you're, you're.
Yeah. Giving the permission to go ahead and start bringing more investigations for first counties.
Might be the other states.
Yeah.
So again, I, I didn't take you down the kind of legal path here, but I'm just thinking chronologically. There's a company out there that's signing leases July of twenty five. And they're signing leases and telling the landowners, hey, the moratorium is up August of twenty six, it's already done. They sign the leases now, and then we come back in July or August of twenty six and we, and we have, you know, we write our own. Expectation that, you know, we're not going to accept any applications until the county has, you know, fully done our research or due diligence. Can they come back and say, I guess with attorneys involved, they come back and say anything, but. Can they come back and say, well, we signed these leases prior to this new rule you're coming up with in late twenty six to cover your tails after? The, you know, after the moratorium comes off, do we need to just go ahead and just kind of figure out what that language might look like sooner than later? Rather than taking the candy out for twelve, fifteen months? I'll, I'll try to see what I can find, I'll get the, uh, and see what we can come up with, but it's, to be honest with you, listen.
Here's the thing, let's say we're all good to go on, let's say, June of next year. Then I brought in front of the county commissioners, resolutions, or a resolution. That is saying hydrogen is accepted as a condition of permit requirement, has all the conditions that are required for it. And put it, and got it in the regulations just like we did with the other. Uh, once that resolution gets passed, it's passed. And if somebody wants to submit an application, the benefit that, the day after that gets passed, they can submit an application. But what I'm saying is, if the moratorium goes, goes away and we still haven't completed all of the, the. You know, the amendments that we want made, or you guys, or the county commission might not be comfortable with yet. Then we can say, hey, look, we can't accept these, we can, to support it to me, you can accept it, but we're not going to hear it. We're not going to publish it, we're not gonna do anything, it'll be on hold until we get everything done, out of the way, then we'll hear it. That's how we'll go.
So would that be put in writing if, would that be in our staff shoots or would that be something we would put in writing, this, this whole language? And so, when's we develop?
It's understood, legally it's not, that's what attorney brings for, for, not a writing, it didn't happen.
So when would we do that, put it in writing to get that?
Well, I could probably just, you know, as a, you know, policy that I could probably bring in front of. I can, yes, I don't know how that would work, I mean, I would just say that legally. If someone brings an application to me, and you guys have not finished the resolution on a, on an amendment. That, that application does not get heard, it gets, it gets put on hold, that's my fault. My fault, or if anyone that's, you know, it'll be, you know, anyone in my position's fault.
We can check with Doug.
Yeah.
And our records.
Yeah.
And see what we can.
Legally do, yeah, yeah. So with the exploration, this is just talk, with the exploration going on, it, has it completed? No, it's still, it's still going on, yeah. So then we're anticipating that somebody's gonna wanna come and, and file an application, is that, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
There's, there's interest out there.
Yes, one hundred percent there is.
Like we said, they, or, or total leases are being assessed.
Leases are, this thing's just got us all wrong, which, which means.
Right, yeah, and when that gets involved, then attorneys get involved, that's part of it, you, uh, they follow the money. And so again, I would just really encourage us to figure out how we can protect ourselves to not get forced into something. And if it's the language that you were just talking about, you know, that's fine, or if it's, if we actually make that as our initial alternative energy. Overarching first line item A1 of our regs. If, if that's what it is, we can do that as a resolution that, you know, we're, we won't accept any applications, or we won't hear any applications. For any of these alternative energies, uh, options. Until we have fully, uh, vetted or, or done our due diligence on all the rules, regs, restrictions and. And so if that would be like, if, if that needs to be put in the, uh, put in our, uh. Put in our document, then fine, but.
It would be a separate in-house policy, it wouldn't be necessarily something that. You know, I mean, this would be something that we would, uh, that would be more of an administrative type policy.
Policies are not law. Our rules and regulations are interpreted as law, they're, I mean, they're not law, but they're interpreted as law.
Sweet, more than just an amendment?
I, I, yeah, I, I think, I think we need to, in our rules and regulations, until we get everything defined, we need to have. A, a line in there that says, you know, on all of these items, knowing the moratorium's gonna go away in a year. We need that soon, because leases are being signed, money's trans, you know, they're, they're, they're getting lined up. We need to have something in there that protects us from being pushed or rushed into something. And when we have just the partial rules and regs figured out, we'll say, hey, that's enough, I'm gonna, I'm gonna apply and I can start pushing. And, and maybe I'm off base, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I agree. The reason I say it's administrative is because, let's say somebody comes in, let's say you have a completion. Say that's not done yet. And someone comes in and pulls, you know, lays an, an application in front of me. I, I would tell them, I, I have nothing to go off of in here, because the resolution that you guys submitted for, uh, county commissioners. Is no rules, no rights. And so if you have no resolution yet, I can't hear a, hear a, an application. Because I have the guidelines, the rules, for that particular app.
And why not memorialize that in what we're talking about, Bill? Why not memorialize that in our rules and regs and says we, we won't hear any application for any alternative energy, uh, items. Until the county's, uh, research in those is complete. I'll have to look, may not have a memorialized item in there. Because, you know, you're a nice guy, Tim, but if you win the lottery and you leave, then what's the next person gonna say? The next zoning administrator may view that differently, say it's just administrative policy, if you need. Well, let me look into it, I could for a minute, that's fair.
And, and to go with it for change, you know, you think about John Q. Public, who does this re-planting and going regulations every day? So there's nothing in this document if there weren't to look for it. If you had a text and then, and then the outline of the changes covered, then anyone can read it and it's not relying on administrative. Well, that's what I would do, you, you do as administrator, whoever does.
Well, what I could do is word it in such a way that it's, uh. It would cover not only alternatives, like any, you know, it's.
Right, right.
Okay, that's how I would have to word it, but I'll, I'll double check for you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna get into the economic development portion. Um, uh. There's a, there's a economic development portion of, of our wind farm that, that helps the county. Is there such a thing with hydrogen? There could, will there be? There could be, there could be, yeah, there could be. That's what I'm saying, this is so new, it's, it's not something that I know. And anything, that's why I was gonna research these other counties and see what they, they cover. I mean, yeah, thi- thinking about property taxes. And if they strike oil, the value of that land goes up, so property tax is still up. If they strike hydrogen, property tax should, should go up. You, the county is getting a benefit out of the wind farm, will we get a benefit out of, uh, uh, approving? An application for hydrogen extraction, possibly? Do, do, do we, do we do it for oil and, and gas? I, I don't know, I don't, I have an oil well.
Would, would you get some?
Maybe you have any? That's what I'm gonna do, yeah.
Would you get some, um. Tax money from the TransCanada Pipeline? That's probably the biggest one.
Okay. There you go.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, and that's just because it's transported through our county.
Correct, yeah, yeah. But that was after a ten-year tax abatement that the state of Kansas allowed.
Okay, is there any tax abatement on hydrogen extracta- extraction?
Well, where do you want it?
Right, yeah. Well, I mean, the economic, can I answer, I don't know how to speak, but. You're on the air back, you're part of the public, aren't you? But, you know, for me, you know, I was, living landowner, you know, maybe? You know, all the guys didn't just die with the money. They spent it. So I'm not saying that should be in, in consideration, but I'm just throwing it out there, if you had a resource on your land that could make you significantly rich, would you, would you wanna do it? And, and I, I wanna be clear too, I, you know, I'm, I'm totally for economic development, there's three pieces to, to, uh, to the government. Either increase taxes, or increase tax base, or cut services, that's it. And inflation average is five percent, and you better increase the tax base. Or taxes five percent per year, to increase taxes five percent per year, everybody's got an opinion on that. So you better figure out what increase tax base. And, and then, and then you can hold services constant, but unfortunately, services are constant. They go up too, and everybody wants more, and everyone says, more leagues and more fire, and they also. I get it that we wanna drive, I mean, I'm totally behind that, but I don't want to get into. A situation that's even remotely close to what we dealt with last fall, where we were. Where it wasn't positive. A whole lot of zones in the world won that project bad, but the application was so bad. And, and the details around it, inaccuracies, incorrect, um, they had, uh, paper, they had pages and pages in there from the TransCanada Pipeline. Where just, you're talking about cutting and pasting, just cutting and pasting there, I mean, that application, we would never accept an application here. For anything that was that jacked up, if it was just a small, um. We, we looked at people just wanting to do a, an L-shaped lot, and if the application isn't correct, we browse it. And here we took an application that was, had other, other companies' information, uh, no definitions. It was, it was beyond anything I had ever seen in what we're expected to try to analyze. And all it did was say, hey, let's look at this two more years, and then the commission, uh, ran it through.
Well, let me, let me clarify something before you, when. When you get an, an application packet from me. The, that is the CUPD application. There are certain items that I will submit to you that are incomplete because they are, they involve other entities besides you all. And so they're there for transparency purposes, just to show that, yes, this agreement is, they are, they are willing to enter into an agreement. Like of this type, yeah, it's kind of, it's, it's worded strangely, it's worded differently. But it's to show you that they are willing to enter into a certain agreement. And so it's just for transparency purposes, it's not for, okay, well, I don't really like this, so I'm gonna, you know, just throw the whole thing out. This is strictly a, uh, there are certain items that I put in your planning commission packets, like this stuff here. That are just for your edification to show you that an applicant has good faith effort in wanting to enter into certain agreements. It may not be the, worded correctly, it may have, you know, it may be incorrect in a lot of ways. But there are certain elements to an application packet that you get, that you do not have, unless they will be able to, they can. And so that's why I did that, I said, so you'll get something in your packets. That will look kind of strange and just, that's why I tell people, I say, I tell you guys, I say, I try to tell you, you know. You can approach me at any time, when I submit an, an application packet, if you have a question, let me know. But it's a, uh, but there's a lot of, there's some, there is some information that you will get in an application packet. That is just shown for transparency purposes only, it's not for the commission to necessarily. Just making myself a note, that's, that's, I have the. I think, I think Tim's asking for guidance to go to, uh, other counties and look for regulations.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess that was my question, would you have a motion to directly do that?
I don't think it's a, a motion if you're just getting a general consensus, if you, if you want. You gotta, I would see something like that, so kind of what we're dealing with.
I'm saying, well, I, I, I see some stuff. Yeah, we don't see, well, I, I don't, but I'm okay with, with, with starting that. We gotta start somewhere, and I will investigate with, uh, your questions.
And, but, but in, in addition to going to other counties, I also want to address James's. Uh, uh, request for a statement in our regulations.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm gonna ask Doug about. I, I can't repeat, I can't repeat what you said, but I'm not sure I can do.
I know what you said, I got it, I just think that would be pretty difficult, uh, to just give us a broader, I don't know. I've got blanket useful provision, uh, on, uh, any unaddressed issues in our, or unaddressed cases. Well, and maybe it's not even just unaddressed, but not, they're not, not.
Incomplete.
You know, incomplete, any improper argument, county, authority, or whatever, we have not completed the rule of regulations.
And I think the word completed application.
So if somebody wants to give us a straw application, they could, is that what you're saying?
No, no, but if you make a completed accurate application.
I'll probably wrap my head around what's an application look like if there is. An application, regulations, no guidelines, I just piece of paper, I'll know this?
I have a, a form, an application form, that they, that an applicant fills out. And they pay a fee, and they give me a plan of some sort, side plan, development plan. That is a complete application. And, uh, it has the, my application form, it's like the birthman information, they got to put signature and, uh, pay their fee. And, uh, if they provide you those three elements, then it's a complete application and it goes in front of you. My form, the fee, the question.
Is that, oh, we could give you some guidance of what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yeah. Knowing Doug, I would beg your chocolate moment, that when we ask for blanket to cover everything you can possibly. In the universe of the county, you can say, no. But if we limit it to, uh, this.
Alternative energy?
Alternative energy, thank you, um, he will be more inclined to go along with it, like just knowing Doug, like I do. And it's on public record, so if you ask him and he says, yes, then I would be a chocolate moment. Okay, if that sounds good. If, if, if it says no, I will leave.
That's right.
Or maybe you don't even wanna ask the overarching universe question, maybe you wanna just go with what you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is.
Yeah.
And in that case, if he says yes, then you know. And in that case, if he says yes, then you know it was both, you're a chocolate ball.
Does, does, does the Bitcoin story, or that call into alternative energy?
Any, any, we have an accessory type leads to an alternative energy, and that's, that's covered.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
There's a lot of things coming down the pipe.
Yeah, and there's gonna be more.
And it, it's just a tip of the iceberg. I had a, 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 an evening with an energy executive the other day, and, uh, I had, I had an evening the other day, at a links company. And, uh, uh, he's saying it's just a tip of the iceberg, with their transmission lines, just a tip of the iceberg.
Okay. Thank you for directing me to what I need to do as well. Can we go?
Yeah.
We wanna make a motion. No, no old business, uh, no miscellaneous, uh, just to kind of update you on the previous subdivision that was. And thank you for letting me dig into that topic. Just, if I, I heard that this issue, I didn't thought it'd be.
I thought you heard it show up. You got any questions? Can you bring them up?
No, no, I can't, you know. Yeah, I mean, I got questions, how fast this whole thing's gonna move, and, you know, the same question you guys had, is, we're out there testing, you know, and when you shake your hands, then it's gonna happen.
It's coming.
We better, we better be ahead of it.
Right.
And, and, so thanks for letting me listen.
Is my question there? Well, I remember four years ago, oil companies outsides me, helping every square mile, and signing more leases, throwing in farmers, like get a lease on all this ground, and helping everywhere, and that was it.
Now that you're talking, I remember, I got a little piece of ground up northeast part of the state, just to let you know, it's supposed to have a transmission line, we'll cross it, I haven't seen that yet. But anyway, as I recall, this has probably been twenty, I think, it's probably been fifteen, twenty years ago, hydrogen, I think it was hydrogen, that paid us five bucks an acre for five years of trees, and nothing ever came.
I'm gonna pull that out, like, I don't throw anything away, but pull that out, just to satisfy, I think it was hydrogen. Yeah.
I, I'm northeast.
Yeah. I'll be going.
I mean, that, to me, I mean, like, when you, we read this, the wildcat, and everything, and I just glance at those slides, and they're talking about the, the geology and everything, it sounds like the world, I mean, they gotta go somewhere looking for it, whether they find it or not. I don't know, it's only, I would disagree that it's not gonna be an, an issue, but I think it's been a learning process, you know, I asked a question, I don't wanna, yeah, so what do they do for you? I know the oil wells, you know, there's, out our direction, there's a few in very southmost part of the county. Uh, the, the, stick them up, stick them in.
Unlikely, because we weren't known?
Yeah, it was pretty dumb, yeah, it was pretty dumb.
And on that, we're standing, we're in grass, there's something out there, that the gas wells. So, back in the fifteen's, maybe.
Well, that's not, yeah, it was settled until like ninety eight, so I don't know that.
Was it seventy one? Seventy one.
Sorry?
Like, was it seventy one?
Seventy five, we said. Oh, oh. Yeah, we adopted the, the comprehensive, our first comprehensive plan in seventy five.
In seventy five, we adopted?
I do, it wasn't, it's been in recent terms of. Pretty outdated, yeah.
And I'm susceptible of the first.
I won't mention battery storage, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying I talk to anybody, but I do know that stuff's, you go read it, it's, um, I know that the administration's pushing it, so.
Well, you can't just go without the supply chain.
Yeah, yeah, so it's battery storage, we're just hearing. We, we, in other words, I'd love for you guys to come up with some regs in terms of renewables that we got to.
The ba- battery storage, I had researched that, and that, that's, that's scary, that's dangerous, that's explosive, it's, it's fatal.
But the Department of Energy, if you don't read their energy, their conference, they're playing, they're gonna go for energy, this is, all of this is what they're talking about. So, if those are gonna start pushing it, you might as well, it's, it's aggressive. And you don't think they're gonna put those battery storage units in downtown Chicago? I don't know what they're gonna do, I just wanna make sure we have regulation, so we're not, like you said, we're not sitting here, you know, collecting better terms for everything. Yeah, it's, it's kind of, and we need to protect ourselves now, and then we can be there for now. So we can avoid what we just mentioned, so.
And we're in here because we have loose regulations, and it's the place to plant, it's the easiest place to plant.
And just like now, I mean, and, and now it's just impactful, I mean, they have rooms, buildings full of attorneys, they're doing just that. They got, they got research folks who are looking for places to put them, checking rules, checking regs, checking governments, checking local governments. Who's a strong commissioner, who's a strong administrator, and they're looking for those holes that they can, that they can make. I'll do a motion to adjourn.
I like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Do the same with adjourn, I'll finish my eye.
All right. Thank you.
No problem.